of the Garden Grove City Council on February 23rd. I will immediately hand over to Kim Nguyen as Chair of the Garden Grove Housing Authority to conduct Housing Authority Agency business.
Thank you very much. A reminder to everyone to please mute your phones. First, may I please call the roll call vote? I mean, the roll call?
Commissioner Beckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bredegum.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Bowie.
Here.
Commissioner Klumpenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Solario.
Here.
Vice Chair Deidre Nguyen.
Here.
And Chair Kim Nguyen.
Here. Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment?
No, there's no one here for oral communications.
Thank you. Moving on, we have two items for consent. I'll entertain a motion in a second.
This is Deidre Nguyen, I motion it.
I second it.
Thank you. May I please get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Beckles.
Here. Yes.
Commissioner Bredegum.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowie.
Yes.
Commissioner Klumpenstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Solario.
Yes.
Vice Chair Deidre Nguyen.
Yes.
Chair Kim Nguyen.
Yes.
Motion received. Nine yes votes.
Thank you. Do we have any matters from any of the housing commissioners? Hearing none, I'll adjourn the meeting and kick it back to City Council. Thank you, everyone.
Alrighty, I will convene Garden Grove City Council. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Bredegum.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Bowie.
Here.
Councilmember Klumpenstein.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Kim Nguyen.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here.
May I please ask Councilmember Deidra Tuha Nguyen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please rise and put your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us on to presentations. We do have a presentation 1A on the new recycling laws under Senate Bill 1383, as presented by HF&amp;H Consultants. Take it away.
Can everybody see my screen?
It looks good on Channel 3.
Okay, so you can let me start again and you can hear me. So that's a good thing. All right, can you see my screen now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, terrific. Let me start this from the beginning and my screen just went black. Okay. Um, so I was trying, there we go. Now we're in, now we're in the slideshow mode. So I'm, my name's Debbie Morris. I am with HF&amp;H Consultants. We provide environmental and solid waste consulting services to the city of Garden Grove. And I appreciate Honorable Mayor and City Council the opportunity to provide information to you on Senate Bill 1383. Senate Bill 1383 was signed into law in 2016 and it is the most significant law, I'm sorry, waste reduction mandate to be adopted in California in the last 30 years. SB 1383 requires the state to reduce organic waste disposal by 75% by 2025. This equates to a reduction of 20 million tons of organic waste being landfilled by 2025. The law also requires the state to increase edible food recovery by 20% by 2025 and has the most significant policy and legal implications for state and local governments. I do want to note that SB 1383 is an unfunded state mandate. And for the community members who may be listening in or watching on Channel 3 this evening, I just wanted to give a brief explanation of what an unfunded mandate is. An unfunded state mandate, this is an unfunded state mandate 1383, is a statute or regulation which requires, in this case, local governments and organics generators to comply with the regulations without providing funding to assist the local governments and organic generators to comply with the regulations of the bill. During this presentation, we're going to take a big picture look at the law's requirements, objectives, and the jurisdiction requirements.
Debbie, I'm sorry, this is IT. Could you try your slideshow again, please?
Sure. Should I escape out or?
Yeah. Maybe try to share the screen.
Okay. Are you still getting it where it has the current screen and the next slide?
Right, we see the next slide.
Yeah, unfortunately, I do not know how to fix that. I want, oh, you know what? I'm wondering, maybe if I turn my other screen up, I've got two screens going right now.
On television, it just shows one slide. Just, it says presentations. That's it.
Okay, let's see. Nope, that didn't help, unfortunately.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on, to talk a little bit about organic waste and to give you, you know, kind of the reason behind 1383 and why this law was passed by the state of California. Organic waste is the largest waste stream in California that is going into our landfills. When we're talking about organic waste, as far as 1383 is concerned, we're talking about green waste, which is like your yard waste, your yard trimmings, grass, et cetera, wood waste, food waste, but also fibers such as paper and cardboard. So paper and cardboard, historically, we've just thought of those as recyclable materials, right? Well, under 1383, those are considered organic materials and so they are covered under 1383. And as you can see from the pie chart, that organic waste accounts for about 67% of materials that are landfilled, with food waste accounting for approximately 18% of the amount going to landfills. SB 1383 also requires California to recover 20% of currently disposed edible food. And edible food is food that is safe for human consumption prior to landfilling. And I'll get into that a little bit in just a minute while I'm talking about Bracken's Kitchen. So right now, when the state did a study a few years ago, 1 in 8 Californians went to bed hungry every evening and were food insecure. Of those 1 in 8, 1 in 5 children went to bed hungry every night in California. And so by recovering the edible food from landfilling, this can really help the food-insecure population. To give an example of how these practices are done, Bracken's Kitchen, which is located in Garden Grove, repurposes recovered edible food from restaurants, hotels, and other food service establishments into nutritious meals to feed the food insecure in our communities. And if you haven't heard of Bracken's Kitchen, I would suggest go on their website. It's a great organization. I've seen their presentations a couple of times and it's really amazing. They will take food, different foods that they've got from restaurants, hotels, food service organizations, they get it and they actually make new recipes and new meals for it. And they have a truck and they go to designate, they can't right now with COVID, things have changed a little bit. But prior to COVID, and they would go and they would prepare these meals and they would hand these meals out to the food insecure. So it's a really, really great organization. There's also an environmental benefit for food recovery and keeping that edible food out of the landfilling. Every 2 and 1/2 tons of food rescued is the equivalent of taking one car off the road for a year. So, you know, you're reducing those methane gases that are generated in landfills when you landfill organic waste. There are several key implementation dates in SB 1383. So as I stated, in 2016, SB 1383 was adopted. The regulations were adopted in late 2020. And by January 1, 2020, the goal was for the state to reduce the organic waste in landfill by 50%. I can tell you right now that did not happen and actual, actually organics in landfill increased in that time period and it increased in 2020. January 1, 2022, the regulations take effect and state enforcement begins. 2024, the regulations require local governments to take enforcement actions against noncompliant entities such as businesses and edible food generators. And January 1, 2025 is the 75% reduction in organics disposal from the 2014 amount and a 20% reduction in the recovery of disposed edible food. So to meet the deadline of January 1, 2022, when the regulations taken, go into effect, CalRecycle is expecting that jurisdictions have already started planning and making programmatic and budgetary decisions regarding the requirements in advance of the deadline. The city of Garden Grove city staff has already developed an SB 1383 implementation plan, which they developed in early 2020, which provided a calendar for drafting and adopting the required ordinances and amending the city's solid waste agreement. City staff met again in January of 2021 to review the progress with the plan and determine any additional areas that require review. So the city of Garden Grove, your staff is on this, they know what's required and they're moving forward with ensuring the city's compliance. Again, just to go over some, what needs to happen by 2022, January 1, 2022, is jurisdictions are required to provide organics collection services to all residents and businesses. They're required to establish an edible food recovery program and we'll go into these in more detail in the next, in the slides coming up. Conduct extensive education and outreach and work, provide, I'm sorry, ensure that the city has a procurement policy or enforceable mechanism to procure recycled and recovered organic product, I'm sorry, products made from organic waste material. And then also capacity planning where cities are required to provide the county information on the estimated organics processing requirement, required for organics generated within their jurisdictions. And again, in 2024, jurisdictions makes, must take action against noncompliant entities. So now we'll go into a little bit more detail on what we discussed on the previous slide. So SB 1383 allows several different collection options and they are very prescriptive within the bill and so I'll just overview what those collection options are. So the first one was the one that, you know, most people know about because they have it at home, which is a three-container system. And that means that all of your refuse goes into one container, all of your yard waste right now goes into another container and your recyclables such as bottles, cans, and papers and plastics go into another one. These get, the colors that are required by 1383 may not match with what the current colors you have in your residential program right now. But 1383 is prescriptive and they do say that the refuse bin has to either have a black body, a black lid, or both of the, the entire container be black. The, what will be the organics container, which would be your yard waste and your food waste, would have to be green body, green lid, or entire green container. And then the recyclable containers, which would be for your segregated recyclables, would be blue. Another option is a two-container collection system where one container can be for segregated organic waste and that's the example on the right with kind of the gray container and the green organics container. And by the way, the refuse container can be gray also, it can be black or gray. And, or the example on the left, which is where you have source-separated recyclable material in your blue container and then your refuse and your mixed organics in the gray container. Another system could be a one container where everything goes into one container, all materials. Now, for the two-container and the one-container system, where the containers have organic waste in them, they have to go to what's called a high diversion organics waste processing facility. And those facilities have to ensure that 50% and then it ramps up, ramps up to 75% of the organic content is recovered at that facility. So what that means is if you have your trash and your recyclables in one container, those, that paper and that cardboard and the other fibers, that's considered organic material. So if you're mixing those materials, it has to go to a high diversion organics waste processing facility and meet those rigorous standards. Also, if you're mixing your refuse and your organics in the same container, again, that container would have to go to that high diversion organics waste processing facility. I have been in talks with Republic Services, who's your current service provider. And while there aren't any facilities at the current time that can meet, meet those diversion requirements for the high diversion organics recycling facility, processing facility, Republic is working and looking into that technology at the times. Right now, they don't know when that will be in line, but they are looking to have their facility in Anaheim meet those requirements for the high diversion organics processing. But we don't know when that's going to come online yet. So edible food recovery, we've kind of talked about the importance of this and, you know, helping the food insecure in our population. And so jurisdictions, they need to identify the existing food recovery capacity. So that means, you know, you've got Bracken's Kitchen, you've got Waste Not OC in Orange County. So how much can they, how much can those organizations take and then turn around and get back into the community? Monitor the commercial edible food generators for compliance. Edible food generators are required to have an agreement with a food recovery organization. So, and that requirement, the requirement to ensure compliance is, falls upon the jurisdiction. Expand the existing food recovery capacity if needed and ensure commercial edible food generators have access to the food recovery services. Education requirements, this is probably the most important part of SB 1383 and is really going to help in the city. Right now, this is, the city staff in their plan is to start a very, very rigorous public education and outreach program in the second half of 2021, once they have the ordinances passed and they're in the midst of negotiating an amended agreement with Republic Services in, in order to incorporate the SB 1383 requirements. Because there are potential enforcement regulations on commercial edible food generators and the businesses for not having an organics program, the more that we can educate and the more that we can make them aware of this. So this doesn't come as a surprise to them on January 1, 2022, when all of a sudden we say, hey, you were supposed to have a food waste recovery program. So that's why this is probably one of the most important components of SB 1383. The procurement requirements. So this is a really interesting requirement of SB 1383. So SB 1383 said that, and let me, let me preface this a little bit. When I'm talking about this, the reason why this was put in SB 1383 is because we're going to be diverting all this organics from landfilling. And, but there aren't all the markets to take that, right? There aren't all the markets to take all the compost, all the malt, all the potential RNG and electricity that will be made from those organic waste materials. So in SB 1383, each jurisdiction's target is 0.08 tons of recycled and recovered organics products per capita year, per capita, per year. And so what that means for Garden Grove, that equates to 295,000 diesel gallon equivalents of renewable natural gas, or 8,000 tons of compost, or 14,000 tons of malt, or any combination of thereof. And, but procurement doesn't necessarily mean purchase. So, you know, somebody, in some agreements, and we'll see, you know, how it gets negotiated with Republic Services, but another entity can purchase that, purchase those materials on behalf of the city. So there are different ways a jurisdiction can use compost and malt for erosion control, also an amendment. And it also requires that jurisdictions procure recycled content paper when it's available at the same price. So there are jurisdictions, going back to the procurement, jurisdictions don't necessarily have to come up with all the money to procure these materials. They can be procured on behalf of the jurisdiction. Inspection and enforcement. So by January 1, 2022, jurisdictions are required to have an enforceable mechanism or ordinance in place, although they're not required to enforce until 2024. And that gives between January 2022 and December 2023, you know, it gives you the opportunity to really, you know, help those, help the businesses and the edible food generators and the residents who are struggling to comply with the requirements of SB 1383. And so the focus during the first two years is on educating generators with the goal to make sure every generator has an opportunity to comply before the mandatory jurisdiction enforcement comes into effect. The regulations allow for two years of education and compliance. So CalRecycle's oversight begins, and that's the state agency, CalRecycle is a state agency and they are overseeing SB 1383. So their oversight begins in 2022. And CalRecycle will be evaluating a jurisdiction's compliance by verifying that all organic waste generators have access to service and that jurisdictions are providing education and that they're issuing notices of violation within the current, the correct timeframe. If CalRecycle determines a jurisdiction is violating one or more of the requirements, a jurisdiction will be noticed, will be noticed and have 90 days to correct. Most violations should be, would be able to be corrected in that timeframe. If they need additional time, it's another 180 days. And it goes on and on until basically, if you're really trying, you have up to 24 months to address any barriers that are really outside of the jurisdiction's control. But I do want to state that the fines and the penalties to jurisdictions are hefty. They range from $500 per violation per day, up to $10,000 per violation per day. So those violations can compound. And so, you know, if you have, you know, so they compound per violation. So you may be getting fined on more than one violation. And that's why it's so important that the city stays on track. So the next steps are to draft and modify the ordinances that are in policies that are required by 1383 and the city is in the process of doing that now. And then the solid waste agreement and the city will be getting started with that probably in March of this year. And educate businesses, residents and businesses. And I do want to let you know, I want to talk to you about rates because of course that is always the most important thing, especially now that we've had all of the, you know, the problems with COVID and the other things that have been affecting people. And I want to give you a few examples. So we have seen rates go up in, in jurisdictions that have implemented SB 1383. I've seen cities go up 30%, 60%, and 100%. So that's what I want you, now this will be negotiated with Republic. They will, there'll be a thorough rate study done on the rates that they propose for residents and for businesses. And so that will be vetted through that policy or through that procedure. And so, you know, you will know that what you are paying has been justified, but I always do want to give the caveat that you may see an increase and it may be a substantial increase. We have had a couple of instances and they've been very, very, very rare where a rate has gone down, but that has been the outlier and not the norm for what we're seeing at this time. So my CalRecycle's information and websites are included in this page as well as my email address and my phone number for anybody, if anyone has any additional questions. And of course, I'm available now to answer any questions also. And so I will stop sharing my screen at this time.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
George, please go ahead.
Yeah, Debbie, you used the term organic food generators. Are, is that just a euphemism for restaurants?
Um, well, it depends. So there's two, in SB 1383 classifies two tiers of edible food generators. And tier one is which starts, which has to comply by January 1, 2022. They're your really large food distributors, your super large restaurants, or not even restaurants, don't get into that tier, but your very large, you know, like your Costcos and your supermarkets, you know, your Walmarts, your Walmart superstores, those kind of things. Then it ramps down in 2024 to what's called the tier two food waste generators. And that covers all of your grocery stores, restaurants with a certain amount of seating, hotels which have dine-in service with a certain amount of seating, and municipal, municipal buildings which have cafeterias, which have a specified number of seating. And so what they're trying to do with that is they're trying to make sure, because, you know, if you think about it, if they have a cafeteria, there's always that food, the tear-offs, or maybe things that, you know, things in foil pans that haven't been touched that aren't getting eaten. And that's where a Bracken's Kitchen comes in, where they can take and repurpose that food and keep that out of landfill.
Yeah, I, the reason I ask, I'm looking at it from a perspective, you know, the, the restaurants have been, you know, really hard hit here with the COVID and, and, you know, trying to, hopefully after we reopen, we'll be able to attract some to reopen in, in our city. But it seems like we'll be hitting them with a mandate to hire one of these companies and then possibly double leaving their, their garbage collection bill. Just very unfortunate.
It, you know, and it is, it's really tough times right now. And so, and your tier two, so if your tier two are restaurants with 250 more seats. So it is your larger restaurant, so it's not your mom and pop restaurants, because I know it's those mom and pop restaurants that have really been hit the hardest. So what they're targeting, and this starts in 2024. So what they're targeting, and this starts in two thousand and twenty-four, are those really large restaurants.
Oh, well, that helps a little. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this presentation? All righty, we thank you for giving us that overview. I'm glad to hear that we still have some time to implement and get our hands around exactly how to educate the public and all the generators on how to deal with this going forward. So thank you. And we'll go ahead and move along to oral communications. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone in the chambers wishing to speak?
Yes, we do. We have Nicholas Dibs.
Okay.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, citizens of Garden Grove. My name is Nicholas Dibs. I first off want to ask the mayor and the council to please consider allowing public comment to be up to five minutes as it used to be, if you only have four or five people here or less. And I don't see why that couldn't be done. I think three minutes is awfully restrictive to discuss important items, and if there's only three or four or five of us here, we should be allowed to have up to five minutes. So please consider that. Would you consider that, Mayor, for the future? Okay. Back on June the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, and at the August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, city council meetings, I brought up the need to have a youth commission. We need healing in this city for the many youth that are suffering from mental issues, as well as being able to cope with the COVID-nineteen that's been plaguing our communities. And we need to reestablish Youth and Government Day and the Youth Commission. We need to, as the previous presentation on SB thirteen eighty-three, we need to educate the community, and that includes educating young people. We need to have a youth commission similar to Long Beach, City of Long Beach, where it would be comprised of adults as well as younger people to have programs, to coordinate programs and outreach, to help bring healing to our young people, including the establishment and implementation of AB twenty-four, which was passed in two thousand and seventeen to provide civic engagement, improve civic engagement for our students. And of significance is that the United States ranks one hundred and thirty-ninth out of one hundred and seventy-two democracies around the world in voter participation, and less than half of eligible young people age, ages eighteen to twenty-four voted in the two thousand and twelve election. In California, less than fifty percent of high school seniors surveyed viewed being actively involved in state and local issues as their responsibility. So we really do need a youth commission instead of pawning this off to the Parks and Rec Department. So Mayor and council members, and Mayor Pro Tim Kim Nguyen, if you'd please agendize this for a future, near future, city council meeting. Regarding the adoption of item three A, adoption of the proclamation celebrating February as Black History Month, I commend and thank Mayor Pro Tim Nguyen for bringing that up and ask you to support that. I think as an educator and teacher, we need to educate people about what goes on, including what's been happening for the last centuries regarding the blacks and the slavery in the country, and what we can do to help improve race relations. Am I out of time? Again, please allow us five minutes if there's less than four or five people. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
No, we have no other speakers, but we did receive written comments from Mr. Craig Durfee. He did send an emails regarding, a letter regarding the lack of support from state legislators for local sound, local sound urban planning and overlooking the need for adequate park and open space per one thousand residents and the long-term effects on children's mental health. And also a request for support for AB twenty-four that established a state seal of civic engagement fixed on high school diplomas based on demonstration of civic education and participation by adopting a resolution and include AB two oh nine for outdoor environmental experiences and education on public lands. And also in, he is also writing about the inadequate park efforts in green space contributing to mental health and emotional stress and information. He shared information on grants to open space. And that's all I have for oral communications and written communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, we will conclude. Oral communications will now recess to conduct other legislative bodies. We'll start with the successor agency, so I will call the successor agency to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll for successor agency?
Member Bredeby?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Member Klavenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, we already did oral communications consent items. It's just receiving file of the minutes. Can I get a motion?
I move the motion.
I heard Fat and George. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Klavenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from successor agency members? Okay, seeing none, we will adjourn and head over to the Garden Grove Sanitary District, and I'll hand it off to President Fat Bowie.
Thank you, Mayor Jones. We now start the Garden Grove Sanitary District. Madam Clerk, could you please call roll?
Member Bredeby?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Klavenstein? Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President O'Neill?
Here.
And President Bowie?
Yes.
Okay. We have done oral communication with the city council, so we move right on to consent item. We have one item, two A. Do I have a motion, please?
Some of it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, goes for the vote?
Member Bredeby?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Klavenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice President O'Neill?
Yes.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, so move right on to item for consideration. We have item three A. May I have the staff report, please?
Item three A is approval of amendment number one to the agreement with West Yos Associates for Professional Services for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Implementation Projects, and I believe that Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Mrs. Promeroy. Mr. President and members of the board, tonight the Sand District is being asked to approve an amendment to an existing agreement with West Yos Incorporated for Professional Engineering Services for the Water Division, which is under the City of Garden Grove. So this is a joint action item. The existing work for West Yos included a water master plan, and a supervisory control and data acquisition master plan, a cybersecurity assessment, and the design of related SCADA, which is the supervisory control and data acquisition project. And so it included construction management of the SCADA system as well for the water system. SCADA is a computer program and all the related hardware devices that turn on and off that control a particular system. And in our original case, for the original contract, that was for the water system. We are asking for an amendment to add a sewer system to this project. This will provide continuity within the Public Works Department and update our aging SCADA system that we use for a sewer system. Staff negotiated the, an amendment which will increase the original contract by four hundred and, almost four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. The added work will be funded using sewer funds. Should the board decide to approve the amendment tonight, and it's also approved by the city council, work can begin as soon as possible and will be completed by the end of two thousand and twenty-one. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Okay, any question, members? Hearing on, Madam Clerk, I will move it on to public speaking on this item. Do you have any speaker that would like to speak on this item?
No, we don't.
Okay, then colleagues, do we have a motion and anyone who wish to discuss it?
Mr. Mayor, or I'm sorry, Mr. President, I'll move it.
O'Neill, second.
Okay, discussion? If not, then I would like to call for the vote. Madam Clerk?
Member Bredeby?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Klavenstein?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Member Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice President O'Neill?
Yes.
President Bowie?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All right, moving on to matters, any matters from members of the Sanitary District? Hearing on, I now close the Garden Grove Sanitary District and back to the city council. Megatones, could you take over?
Thank you. We'll reconvene. Garden Grove City Council takes us on to consent items. It is recommended that items three A through three H be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Do I have any requests to pull? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion, Klavenstein.
Please, please, don't worry, I second it.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Bredeby?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klavenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, thank you. That takes us on to public hearings. We do have one item tonight, item four A, which is introduction and first reading of an ordinance approving amendment number A oh two seven, two thousand and twenty.
Item four A is an ordinance, and that ordinance is entitled, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove approving code amendment number eight, twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty, a zoning text amendment to Title Nine of the Garden Grove Municipal Code pertaining to the regulation of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And Ms. Kim and her staff are here to give the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I am gonna share my screen. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, so before you tonight is a revised ADU and JAD ordinance for your consideration that complies with state law. The Department of Housing and Community Development performed a review of the draft ordinance, and HCD recommended additional changes to the ordinance which have been included. HCD has enforcement authority over ADU ordinances to ensure compliance with state law. And our city attorney can answer any questions about possible enforcement actions if, if the ordinance, if the ordinance is adopted, that does not comply with state law. So for this presentation, I do have a PowerPoint, and each of you was given a printout of the presentation. We will begin with slide two. State has identified the ADUs and JADUs as an important affordable housing option to meet the state's growing housing shortage. As such, significant changes were made to state law that became effective January first, two thousand and twenty. The state law requires jurisdictions to allow ADUs and JADUs in all zones where residential uses are permitted. State law requires jurisdictions to allow ADUs on lots developed or proposed to be developed with single-family or multiple-family developments. State law requires jurisdictions to allow JADUs on lots developed or proposed to be developed with single-family homes. State law prohibits jurisdictions from imposing a minimum lot size requirements to develop an ADU or JADU. HCD hasn't interpreted the intent of state law and that jurisdictions cannot impose bedroom restrictions on ADUs or JADUs as it is considered a discriminatory practice based on familial status. And finally, state law allows jurisdictions to adopt an ADU ordinance. An adopted ADU ordinance allows jurisdictions to establish control over certain development standards of ADUs as permitted by state law, such as imposing unitized requirements consistent with state law, and also imposing architectural compatibility requirements. To give you a perspective of what other OC cities are doing, an ADU survey was conducted by OCAC in August, two thousand and twenty, and determined that at the time, five cities were in the process of adopting an ADU ordinance, ten cities adopted an ADU ordinance, three cities adopted an urgency ordinance, and ten cities were following state law. Slide three. So the next series of slides will illustrate how ADUs and JADUs can be developed on single-family and multiple-family lots. So a single-family lots, property owners can construct both an ADU and JADU. So in the exhibit, the ADUs are identified in orange, and the JADUs are identified in blue. ADUs can be developed as a, as detached from the main house, or it can be designed as an attached unit to the main house. State law has established the parking and set by requirements for ADUs. So state law requires one parking space for ADUs or no parking if the property is located within half a mile from a bus stop. ADUs are allowed up to have, up to a four-foot setback to any side on your property line. The city is allowed to control, is allowed some control over the maximum unit size of ADUs. And the proposed ordinance will establish a maximum unit size of a hundred and fifty square feet for a studio and one bedroom unit, and a thousand square feet for a two or more bedroom unit. The ADUs will be limited to one-story in height and a maximum building height of sixteen feet. JADUs can also be proposed within space of an existing single-family residence, or as part of an attached garage conversion, and the maximum size of the JADU is five hundred square feet, which is established by state law. And no parking is required for the JADU, although if an attached garage is converting into a JADU, the required parking within the garage must replace onsite as open parking. Slide four. State law continues to allow the conversion of existing permitted space within the existing residence or detached structures into a ADU. ADU conversions are only required to comply with applicable building code requirements. So state law does not require parking for an ADU conversion, and state law does not establish a maximum unit size for an ADU conversion. Also, state law does not require replacement parking when a garage is converted into an ADU. Also, JADUs can be constructed on properties with the ADU conversion and are subject to the same required, requirement stated in the previous slide. Slide five. This is a three-D rendering of how new ADUs, ADU conversions, and JADUs can be This is a three-D rendering of how new ADUs, ADU conversions, and JADUs can be developed on single-family lots. This is actually a sketch of a residential block in, on, in the Adele Street and Lamson Avenue, just to provide you with a three-D image of how these units can be constructed. Slide six. So state law now allows up to two detached ADUs to be developed or proposed to be developed on lots with multiple-family developments. JADUs are not permitted on multiple-family developments. So the orange buildings in this image represent the new ADU conversion. Similar to ADUs constructed on single-family lots, parking for ADUs on multiple-family developments are limited to one space per ADU. Or no parking is required if the property is located one-half mile from a bus stop. The size of the ADU, of the ADU would also be limited to a maximum size of eight hundred and, eight hundred and fifty square feet for a studio and one-bedroom unit, or a thousand square feet for a unit with two or more bedrooms. The ADU would also be limited to one-story in height and maximum height of sixteen feet. Also, the setbacks would be allowed up to four feet to any side on your property line. Slide seven. State law allows ADU conversions within portions of existing multiple-family developments now used for living purposes, and up to twenty-five percent of the existing units are counted towards the allowable number of ADU conversions permitted. So for example, in this illustration, there are eight existing units, and twenty-five percent of the total were allowed for two ADU conversions, which are identified in orange, and in this case represent, represented garage conversion. So similar to the ADU conversions on single-family lots, only the building code requirements are applicable. No parking is required for the ADU conversion, no replacement parking is required for garage conversions, and there's no maximum unit size as established by state law. Slide eight. This is also a three-D rendering of how new ADUs or ADU conversions can be developed within existing multiple-family developments. And this is also a sketch of a residential block in the Adele Street and Lamson Avenue neighborhood. Therefore, Council, staff recommends that you take the following action tonight: conduct a public hearing, and determine that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA, and introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance approving amendment number A zero twenty-seven twenty twenty. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions. And I'm also gonna stop sharing my screen.
Thank you, Maria. That was wonderful. Colleagues, who wants to jump in?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a quick question.
Fat, go ahead. You jumped in first, and then George.
Okay, Maria, could you clarify a couple things for me? You mentioned that the state does not allow us to limit the number of bedroom. Now, in your slide, you mentioned that the maximum number of bedroom per one thousand square foot is two. Two bedroom require one thousand square feet. Now, and is there a maximum size of the ADU unit? Like, is one thousand is the maximum size?
Yes, so the ADU size is based on the, the maximum size is based on the number of bedrooms. So for a two-bedroom unit or three-bedroom unit, the maximum size is a thousand square feet.
So if someone build a four-bedroom ADU, then they could build, let's say, thirteen hundred square feet, or how does that work?
No, it would be limited to a thousand square feet. So whether it's two bedrooms, three bedrooms, or four bedrooms, it would be limited to a thousand square feet. That would be the maximum.
So, so how good we not being able to mandate that for one thousand, there's no way we can cram a four-bedroom unit into a one thousand square foot home or ADU? So, so why are we not allowed to set a number of bedroom, maximum bedroom, given that the the maximum size of an ADU is only a thousand square feet?
Councilmember Bowie, this is Omar. If I can answer that, I spoke with a building official about the, about the maximum number of bedrooms you can have in a thousand square foot. We are proposing that our ordinance limit and put a maximum square footage of ADUs at one thousand, and at one thousand, they can only get up to three bedrooms. The state is saying that we cannot limit the number of bedrooms, although we can limit the size of the ADUs to one thousand, and that's because someone can decide to build either a two-bedroom or, you know, or a three-bedroom in a thousand square foot ADU, or it could even be a one-bedroom, one thousand square foot ADU. So the state doesn't, doesn't want us, you know, dictating a number of bedrooms, but the building codes dictate based on, you know, the maximum amount based on the square footage. And again, the ordinance is proposing to limit the size of ADUs. The highest would be a thousand square feet.
Now, is a thousand square feet Garden Grove requirement, or is that state requirement?
It would be a Garden Grove requirement. The state allows up to twelve hundred square feet. So, so state law says that we cannot, for a, for a multi-bedroom ADU, we cannot require less than one thousand square feet, but state law allows up to twelve hundred square feet. So we are opting to impose a one thousand square feet because state law allows us to do that, but that's the most that we can limit it.
Okay. I once lived in a tiny house that had eleven hundred square feet roughly, close to thousand square feet. So, and it had three tiny bedrooms, very small, and, and a kitchen with almost no, no dining area. So, so twelve hundred square foot for a three-bedroom house is very, very difficult to build. So, bring it down to a thousand square feet, I don't see how someone could build a reasonable three-bedroom in that ADU unit. Can, can stop? Can I clarify that for you?
This is Omar again. Again, I, I got the information from the building official, and, and based on the building codes, not only when you have living space, not only do you have bedrooms, but you also have to have a certain square footage for kitchen, common area, you know, like a living room, et cetera. And once you add all of those required spaces, you, the most you can have is three bedrooms, according to the building official.
So you have to have kitchen?
Yeah, for dwelling unit, you have to have a kitchen, and you have to have a common area.
Okay, yes, I, I need Fat to, to clarify, with one thousand square feet, can someone build a reasonable three-bedroom with kitchen and common area? And maximum cost?
Yes.
Fat?
Again, I'll relay the information from, from the building official, and, and his opinion, three-bedroom is the most that you can build in a thousand square foot dwelling unit.
I see. If that is the case, then why are we limited at a thousand square feet? Because it doesn't do any good. Then why not do it? If we have to, if we allow someone to build a three-bedroom ADU at one thousand square feet, then why not allow twelve hundred square feet? It doesn't, does not make any more sense to, to make it even smaller.
Well, you know, at one point, we, the staff did recommend twelve hundred, and the City Council wanted us to come back with an ordinance that, you know, limits them to the highest extent allowed by state law. And what, the ordinance that we're bringing before you is the, you know, it regulates ADUs, the most as state law allows us. And the size is one of them. So one thousand is the lowest we can go, one thousand is what we're proposing. And that was in the direction of the City Council.
Yes, my, my, my initial goal is to limit the number of bedroom, not, not the size. So if, if bringing down the size to one thousand square feet and still not being able to limit the number of bedrooms, then it might not be that, that, it might not be a good idea. I don't know if, if other council members might think otherwise, but I'm, I'm open to other ideas, but I think it, it doesn't do any good, then why limit it to thousand?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please go ahead, George. Before you go, George, let me clarify, this is a public hearing item. We will open it up to the public for speaking. So right now, we're just sort of asking clarifying questions, we're not deliberating. Thank you. Go ahead, George.
Yeah, so, I, and again, I guess that goes to more to deliberation than my question, but, so in reading SB thirteen thirty-three, I see that, you know, this is getting kind of crammed down our throats, but we don't have much choice. But again, I'm not an attorney, nor have I played one on television, but just a layman's cursory reading of it, it clearly says that all funding for any kind of problems associated with implementing this shall be repaid by the state. So increased sewage capacity, increased, you know, road maintenance, police services, if the parking, the quality of life issues to the community, the parking issues, if, you know, obviously, we can't dictate parking, they're telling us, you know, sorry, well, the quality of life is gonna decrease in our community, so we may have to purchase property and build parking structures to offset that. That would be costs that would, the state should be liable for. Am I correct on that?
I, I don't know the, the answer off the top of my head. I would have to give back to you on that.
And, and going back to, you know, Fat, what he was, was talking about with the, with the diminished size, you put a three-bedroom in a thousand square foot, you know, with all the, you know, bathroom, kitchen, all the, you know, common area, you're looking at three very, very small bedrooms. And at that point, the market's gonna dictate, you know, who's gonna wanna rent a, a bedroom that you can't even put your bed in? So I, I think that, that kind of answers your question on that one, Fat.
Mayor Jones?
Stephanie, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just have, I guess, a clarifying question. It's in the staff report under number of ADUs permitted in multiple-family developments. There's a sentence here that talks about, allows multiple ADUs to be constructed within portions of existing multifamily structures not to be used for livable space such as storage rooms, boiler rooms, passageways. Can you clarify, what, what is a passageway, and, and how, how is, how does that work?
So Councilmember Clofenstein, this is actually terminology out of state law. So state law does allow any non, any non-living, living area of an existing multiple-family developers to be converted. So it could be, it could be an attic, it could be possibly laundry facilities to be converted, but any space that's not living. So that terminology is, is right out of state law.
Yeah, this is Omar again, and, but they do have to comply with the building codes and fire codes. So they, they would have to be able to put windows, you know, insufficient space for the kitchen, and the bedrooms, and the bathrooms, you know, fire, you know, fire access such as windows, light. So, you know, it, it depends on, on the location within the existing space where the apartment building owner wants to build the ADU. It's gotta be a real livable space.
Yeah, I just, when I hear the word boiler room and passageway, the last thing I think of is a livable space.
Understood. I wish I could understand the state's thinking, though.
Yeah.
One more question, Omar.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, George.
If there is a component of regaining funds from the state, on any of the issues I talked about before, would that be appropriately put into this ordinance? Ways of calculating and recouping those monies, or is that something that city staff would just do on their own?
Well, in terms of mandates by, created by state law, there is a process under the, there's a commission in the state that addresses that. And so you have to look at each bill, at the end of the bill, the, the state legislature determines whether it's a refundable mandate or not, and they usually make findings. This is why I don't know the answer from the top of my head, I have to go back to the bills. And sometimes even when the state does make findings as to why is that a, is not a refundable mandate, you can still try and, and submit a claim, and then it takes years for the state's Mandates Commission to make a final determination on that. We actually have had claims like that processed and approved. The Brown Act is one example. But then, you know, the state actually paid us for posting agendas for many years until they put a ballot measure that put the Brown Act mandate into the California Constitution, and then all of a sudden became a requirement of state in local agencies, and they no longer reimburse us for complying with the Brown Act, because now it's in the Constitution that we have to provide public notice and comply with Brown Act requirements. So, you know, if, if we are able to prevail in submitting a claim, the state normally tries to find ways to get out of those payments.
Okay, any other questions at this time, or should I go ahead and open the public hearing and see if we got anybody out there? Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers wishing to speak on this particular item?
We do. We have Maureen Blackman, and we and we also have Nicholas Dibs. So Maureen Blackman is going to be up first.
This never gets easy, especially after a year of lockdowns. But, good evening, Mayor Jones, City Council and staff. The two thousand, in two thousand and three, the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association took on a housing project that would replace three homes on large lots and create a gated community with units or more. It seems almost hysterical at this point. The neighbors came together, east, central, and even the west to stop the variances, stick with existing codes, and ask the developer to live by the rules. After a year in county, city council meetings, and vocal yet respectable communication, the developer abide by the existing codes and build twelve units without a gated community. The concerns in the neighborhood were not just about this project, but the domino effect that it may take forever in our community, our neighborhoods. Those rules upheld for many, many years, and it seems like all the rules will be abolished once four A passes tonight. According to the comparisons from two thousand and seventeen, just a mere two years ago, the changes are staggering. Now, two, three ADUs could be allowed on each lot, only a four-foot lot line, convert garages, attics, boiler rooms, whatever that is, and maybe I can convert my dog kennel net. The parking requirements seem to be only required for junior accessory dwellings, and the requirements say something along the lines of find a place to fit it. Another most staggering change is the owner occupied is out. Also unbelievable is the fact that these units can be sold. As long as the developer is a nonprofit, the units can be sold if it's deemed affordable housing. The list of changes that go on and on, once this passage will change our neighborhoods forever. I'm asking council to respect, respectfully hold off on this vote until the community gets a true public hearing, not by telephone, face-to-face, even if it's at the Village Green, to have questions answered and allow them to either accept the changes or host a funeral for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
We do. We have, we have Nicholas Dibs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, citizens of Garden Grove. When the city asks citizens to, or allow citizens to make public comment, whether in the regular public comment or in public hearings, if there's only one or two or three or four of us here, we should be allowed five minutes. So on the hearing, is it three minutes or five minutes?
Three minutes. Thank you.
Well, I hope you would please consider less than, less than five or less than four, that you would allow five minutes so that there can be enough time for people to say things. Because three minutes is oftentimes not long enough. And, uh, whether it's a public hearing or public comment, if there's only one or two or three or four of us here, why can't we have five minutes? So I'm going to ask that request again, and if you'll please consider that, the mayor and the council. Now with regard to ADUs, um, a lot of this is already determined by the state. And as I understand it, that the proposal tonight is basically just to limit it from 12, up to 1,200 square feet to a maximum of 1,000 square feet. Um, everybody seems to have different views on this. You're either in the, you like the ADUs or you don't. For the property owner, if you're on a big lot in central or west, or central or east part of Garden Grove, you have a huge lot. And, and it's, and you want to use your property, it would be nice to have the flexibility to have 1,200 if the lot is big enough. Over on the west side, where most of the lots are 6,000 square feet or less, I would say you can't get 1,200 square feet in, uh, in West Garden Grove, uh, very comfortably. So it makes sense to do the 1,000 square foot limit, uh, for detached ADU. Uh, so the only suggestion I can make at this point is if the council would consider putting a size of the, of the lot, uh, correlation so, so that if you're on a bigger lot, you could have up to 1,200 square feet. And if you're in a smaller lot, so that's an idea you might want to consider. I do think that there are concerns on the other side of the parking, the density issue and so on. I do think that our city and our planning and building staff are, are doing a pretty good job of making sure that the architectural compatibility and the, uh, how things fit in look really good. If you go to West Garden Grove, you'll see that before there were ADUs, many people converted their garage to living space, to, to the regular home and added a new garage. Um, okay, thank you for listening.
Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
No, we have no more speakers.
Okay, um, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, thoughts and comments and deliberation and action from colleagues.
Um, Mayor Jones is Deidre. I have a question.
Yeah, please go ahead, Deidre.
Um, thank you. Omar, can you clarify? Just want to, um, follow up on, on Nicholas Dibbs, just make a comment. Uh, regarding to the size, um, of the lot, uh, can you, can you clarify the lot size have not to? My, my state guidelines is not taking those consideration. Am I correct?
Yeah, state law doesn't allow us to specify minimum or maximum lot sizes. Um, but we are allowed to, uh, specify, uh, minimum separation between buildings and, uh, minimum four feet setbacks. So when you apply the existing structure on the lot and the size of the lot and the separation requirement, um, that has a limiting effect on the size or the number of ADUs that can be built on a particular lot.
And that's what our mandate was from a minimum four feet, but then we have like up, we have six feet. Am I correct?
That's correct. That's one of the, that's one of the, uh, development standards that we are proposing.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, this is, uh, Councilmember Konfenstein.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Thank you. Um, I kind of noticed just reading over the staff reports, um, the statement that said no one from the public spoke. And I have to wonder if that is, um, whether it be planning or a council meeting or so forth, if that is just the times we're living in right now, it's difficult for people to either come and speak, um, in public at these meetings or whether, as most of us, our plates are full, our stress is high, and there's a lot going on. And so maybe this thing, these types of situations that are extremely serious to the community are just slipping through the cracks. Um, so no one is coming to these meetings, speaking on this issue. But yet I guarantee if I were to stand in the public square, wherever that might be, the grocery store, a park, someplace where there's multiple people, homeowners, et cetera, everybody has an opinion on this topic and everybody has, uh, something to say about it. Um, we know obviously that ADUs can be a, a strong revenue generator for some people. And at times they can be very beneficial. But I think, uh, there's a lot of people that feel just the opposite and are concerned about overcrowding, parking, infrastructure and the like. So it does make me kind of question, um, just the transparency of this happening right now. Um, and, and if we owe it to the community to really make sure that we're getting the word out. Um, I would also like some clarification. Um, Maureen Blackman did bring up a good point about, um, that these units can possibly be sold if a nonprofit. I'd like some deeper clarification on that. Maybe, um, City Attorney Sandoval could, could speak to that.
Um, okay, uh, just, uh, two quick answers. Number one, in terms of the notification, we notified like, uh, any other public hearing. Uh, and I think, uh, the pandemic could have an effect on people, uh, actually physically coming to planning commission meetings, uh, and city council meetings. Um, but we also in the notification indicate that, um, individuals can send their comments by email as well. Um, so that's a quick answer to that. And I, I think I need to remind the city council that this law is in effect, uh, is state law now. And we are processing hundreds of ADUs now under the more lenient state regulations. So the longer we wait, the, the, the larger the ADUs are going to continue to, to be built in Garden Grove. Um, so what we're proposing is, you know, additional limitations to what state law currently is allowing. And I think because we have had two planning commission hearings, we've had, this is a third city council hearing. Uh, developers have noticed and they are submitting applications left and right. And staff is overburdened by applications, uh, for ADUs. I think everybody's trying to come in before any ordinance gets in place. Um, the answer asked to, uh, being sold individually is a very specific exemption for nonprofits like Habitat for Humanity. Habitat for Humanity, uh, was able to go up to Sacramento and, and lobby for that exception. And it's only when you have a piece of property that's being developed in, into multiple little homes that are managed by a nonprofit, uh, and are for low-income families that put their own sweat equity into building the homes. Uh, and then once they are built, they are eventually the, the owners or the, you know, the people who built the houses will own those homes after, after a certain period. And it's at that time that Habitat for Humanity can sell the homes individually. And that, you know, and basically they create a mini HOA for the common areas. But the homes are being owned individually by the families that helped build them. So I'm not sure how many nonprofits like Habitat for Humanities are going to be out there, uh, in Garden Grove. But, um, I sense that they need a larger lot to be able to build multiple homes in a lot, uh, in order to, you know, promote that type of development. Um, hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, yeah, that, that does provide some, some clarification.
Mayor Jones is Deidre.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
May I have another question?
Sure.
Um, Omar, one more thing. As, as you say, that currently we have, we are processing the ADU, uh, applications, right? And by, by not adopting the ordinance right now, are we going to run into a potential risk? Uh, like you say, we're going to have like, um, a, a larger unit, uh, with the leniency of the regulation by state. But at the same time, are we going to, um, like when my extending the, the, by extending and not passing the, um, adopted ordinance, are we going to having a, um, a great period where once we adopt it, um, any 10 applications will go with what, with what, the new ordinance or by the state?
Okay, so. Yeah, so the, the quick answer is that if you introduce the ordinance today, it comes back for second reading. Under state law, it needs a second reading at the next meeting. And then it gets adopted. And then we have, the city clerk has a publication requirement. The ordinance becomes effective 30 days after adoption. Excuse me. Um, and after those 30 days, that's when the ordinance takes effect. Uh, until the 30 days and after the second reading, adoption and 30 days pass, the city is required to continue to process applications under state law and not under the ordinance.
Questions, uh, question?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Um, if we, let's just say that the ordinance gets into effect on, let's just say on April 1st, for example. People who submit the application before April 1st will comply with the new ordinance or or, or they don't have to? If they submit the application before that deadline, before that line?
Applications submitted before April 1st will be subject to the state, more lenient state law. We cannot, we cannot enforce the new ordinance until it becomes effective on April 1st.
Mr. Mayor, O'Neil, I have a question, whenever.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Not really a question, just wanted to chime in. Uh, obviously very frustrating when you have mandates pushed down on you from the state. We're all aware of it, the little trash mandates, uh, zoning issues, ADUs. Everything's being forced down our throat. We have no say, pretty much. So we try to, this, this, this at least would put some local control on it. Uh, that's why I'd be in favor of it. But, um, you know, a properly done ADU on a properly sized lot with proper parking and all that was fine back in the day. But now we have people up in the legislature like Scott Wiener and others that are cramming things down our throat. Maybe it's good for San Francisco, but it's not good for Garden Grove. Uh, it's just, it's just frustrating as a, a public official that was locally elected to defend and, and respect the wishes of our residents to be forced into these situations. But with that being said, you know, state law is state law and we have to, uh, abide by it. Otherwise we will get sued and we will lose. So, you know, I'm in favor of moving forward, um, but it's just ludicrous that you could build an ADU on a, you know, 5,000 square foot lot, provide no parking, um, build, build out the garage, no parking, uh, additional people in there, the, the grass and sewer. Um, you know, it's just really frustrating. I, I am just so frustrated with it. Uh, it's, it's, it's terrible. Um, but we will deal with it one step at a time. Um, I, I think we should, we should move forward and pass this tonight to at least have some local control. If we don't, it's just going to keep going by the current state law. When I was a planning commissioner before I got on council, we, this came to us. And at the time, in Garden Grove, you could build an ADU on an, it, it had to be a 9,000 square foot lot. Uh, when we were on planning commission, when I was on planning commission, we were getting mandates put down on us that we had to, we basically were given an ultimatum that we had to lower the, the size of the lot to like 7,000 square feet. Now there's no limit and, um, just frustrating. I just want the people out there to know that you've got to pay attention to what your state legislators are doing because they are, have a super majority and they can pass anything they write. And the only reason they're not passing further mandates right now is because we're in a pandemic and they've been told not to submit too many bills. But everybody that gets elected up there wants to write 20 bills a year and, and force these changes upon, upon all of us. And we've got to pay attention and, and I say we fight back as much as we can within state law. So that's me venting and I just had to, had to do that. Thank you.
I agree with you.
Thanks, John. Thanks, John. Well said. Anybody else? Go, go ahead. Who is that?
Mayor Protem Kimwin.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I would like to motion to approve the item.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I, I just have one question before we move on.
Okay. Could, can we get a second to the motion first from somebody?
Uh, O'Neil will second it only because I think the, the alternative is worse.
Yeah, un- understood that you, you were very articulate with that. Go ahead, George.
Yeah, um, I, I'm understanding that the maximum height on these is, uh, 16 feet. Um, does that mean you could build a two-story ADU on 1,000 square feet, effectively making it 2,000 square feet? I mean, all you have to do is dig down four feet and if you can go 16 feet high, that gives you 20 feet, right?
This is, this is Omar. I can answer that question. Under the ordinance we're proposing, that, um, uh, we have a high limit. If you look at page one of six of 159 in your agenda, item E is a high limit. And it says a new attached and detached ADU shall be one story, constructed at ground level and should not be more than 16 feet. So the ordinance stipulates that there can only be one story and construct a ground level. So they can't, they can't dig underneath.
Thank you very much. And, and I just want to say, I, I echo, uh, John's thoughts. I think he was pretty articulate. Really frustrating that the state is, you know, dumping this on us and, and we're limited on what, what we can do. Very frustrating.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, any final comments? Otherwise we have a motion and a second. Um, I'll just, uh, I haven't said anything, so I'll just add my two cents. I, I think, um, John articulated very well and, um, I mean, th- this is something that's being mandated down upon us. There's, um, I've heard about 500 of these applications in the queue already. Um, there's a logjam of people trying to get them in. And this has gone through two public hearings at the planning commission level. This is our third public hearing at the city council level. It, it has been heard. We're aware of the potential impacts, but we're also aware that this is a state mandate. And the longer we delay it, we're only shooting ourselves in the foot by denying ourselves some iota of local control. So, um, I, you know, I, I'm going to concur that we should move forward and adopt this so that we have at least a tidbit of local control within this item. And we'll keep pursuing it, you know, legislatively and, and other ways to try and find the correct balance going forward. So we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, please roll call vote.
Councilmember Bridegum?
No.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
No.
Councilmember Konfenstein?
No.
Mayor Protem Kimwin?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Four yes votes with Councilmembers Bridegum, Bowie and Konfenstein voting no.
Terry, did we read the title of the ordinance earlier?
She did.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public hearings. Um, we'll go to, uh, commission committee matters. We do have the appointments for admin board of appeals. Um, I submitted a list to Terry, so take it away.
Okay, those appointments for the administrative board of appeals are Kathleen Ladd, Jeff Tacne, Arturo Arusticui. Tacne, Arturo Aristegui, James Kester, Adam Degner.
Can I get a motion and a second to approve the list?
O'Neil, O'Neil, second.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, the, who was the, who made the motion?
I'll move it, George.
Thank you. Councilmember Brightigum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All righty, takes us on to items for consideration. Item six A, this is actually the same or a mirror of the item that we already heard at sanitation district. So I don't believe we need a staff report on this. If we can just go straight to a motion to mirror the action we took earlier under sanitary district.
O'Neil, move.
I'll move it, Steve. I'll second it. George.
O'Neil, Brightigum. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All righty, thank you. That takes us on to matters. We do not have any items listed, so I'll go around, starting with Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen.
Nothing from me.
Thank you. District one, Councilmember George Brightigum?
Yeah, a couple of matters. I just wanted to officially report out to the public on the amicus brief filing that the city, that this dais had asked our city attorney to support our sheriff by directing an amicus brief. As you know, the sheriff was tasked to remove half of his jail population to let him out. And a lot of community members were upset by that. And anyway, I just wanted to report that that case was a victory for the sheriff, and he no longer has to remove his population. So just wanted to let the public be aware of that. The second item was, is actually a request, and I'm hoping I can get a second from somebody. I've been told numerous times over the couple decades how Garden Grove is the largest, if not, or one of the largest, if not the largest, city in California that is not a charter city. And I would like to get a staff report with the pros and cons of charter city status. So we could kinda, not, you know, not, I don't, I'm not saying we need to go that way, but it would be nice to know officially what the pros are, what the cons are, and then we can have the discussions after the fact. But I'd like staff to compile a report and get it to us by next, before summer on, on that. And so I was hoping to get a second on that.
George, I'd second you on Klaufenstein.
Could I have a second, Stephanie?
Yeah. Motion a second, I believe that would be, is that to agendize it as a voting item for the next meeting?
Well, I'm just asking for, I'm just asking for a staff report.
Right. So you're asking for an amendment of staff time and, and resources, so.
Correct, correct. Not really any action on our half. I, I don't, I'm not saying we need to vote to become a charter city or anything like that. I just want a, a report.
Well, let me, let me ask legal counsel. But I, I believe to dedicate staff time and resources, which is a cost to the taxpayers, that has to come back as a voting item next time, right?
Yeah, that's not, that's what your procedures say, that you vote on it so it can come back as an action item.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, okay. Well, then that will be my motion to bring it back to the next, to the next meeting.
To agendize it for the next meeting. Yeah, okay. Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Councilmember Brightigum?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Thank you. Anything else, George?
No, that, that wraps it up for me.
Okay, thank you, sir. District two, Councilmember John O'Neil.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I hope I'm not stealing anybody's thunder, but I wanted to congratulate our very own TJ McGovern, who was our, ended as our interim fire chief in Garden Grove when we were Garden Grove Fire Department, has just been promoted as Orange County Fire Authority to Division Chief for the Emergency Command Center. So kudos to a Garden Grove guy that has done really well, really helped us out during the passing of Chief Schultz and the transition there. And he's doing a great job over at the Fire Authority. So congratulations to him on that. On another note, on the, on the item tonight regarding the ADUs, you know, it's very frustrating. Everybody in the county is dealing with it, with what Sacramento is pushing down. But I can tell you, there's a glimmer of hope, because I sit on a bunch of different boards in the city and the county. And there's a lot of talk in the cities and the county, the county of Orange, of pushing back on things like this. For instance, you have, you know, an ADU mandate that says four-foot property line. Well, fire code is five foot. So now you've just decreased between buildings, you've decreased from ten foot to eight foot. Fire can jump pretty quick from house to house. And the, the more structures we're putting on a, a property affects our, our life and, and, you know, from fire and, and property damage and loss of life. Anyway, there is pushback. I think we as local governments and even residents need to let Sacramento hear us loud and clear that we want to control our area where we live. The majority of that local agency or those residents should, should have a voice in what happens in their own backyard. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. District three, Councilmember Deidre Tuha Nguyen.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With this on, I'm very excited to share with the, with the constituent of District Three, we have the, the great news. The Pavilion Plaza West is having a new, gonna have a new facelift. So we're gonna have a groundbreaking ceremony tomorrow with the, you know, with new, new supermarket gonna come in. So just want to announce that. That's a very exciting news that we've been waiting for, for the past many years to see that empty lot, the building. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. District four, Councilmember Fat Bowie?
Originally, I was just having one, but thank you, Councilmember John O'Neil. I would like to talk about two things. First one is, is really surprised that the city of Orange is pushing back at the state. I would like to, I, I will, I will try to contact my, our friend at the city of Orange to find out what's going on there. I want to know how can they, how can the city of Orange pushing back at the state? And I would like to try to find out, you know, whether they, they are able to make any ground and see if, you know, if, if, if I hear otherwise, I may want to bring back the, you know, the item that on ADU that we voted on and see if it makes sense for us to rescind that, that decision. It, it all depend on the outcome of what Orange, the city of Orange is, is capable to do. Secondly, I would like to, you know, as for the mayor and, and, and council supporting me in term of, you know, agendize an item for action at the next council meeting. I really believe that we, you know, should discuss the going back to regular meetings. I, I kind of tired of meeting online and, you know, I don't, do not see my colleagues. And it's very difficult to keep continuing on these virtual meetings. So I, I'd like to discuss that and take action whether we should come back to, you know, you know, meeting onsite. And if we need, I understand that the county and the state now allow essential workers, people working in the supermarket and teachers at Unified School District being vaccinated. So why not vaccinating the city council and key staff, if not all the city staff, so that we can start to meet in person again? So I would like to make that request.
Colleagues, any, any discussion? My, I mean, my, my personal feel, I'll just say, is I'm not particularly inclined to rush that and, and get ahead of it. I mean, I, I'd like to get back to normal as soon as we can too, but I'm not quite sure that we're there yet. So I think there's still an ongoing implementation of testing and vaccines, and we've still seen waves even fairly recently. So I'm personally not in, in as much of a hurry. I think we've got something that functionally is, is working. And I, and I wanna, I don't wanna go back to meetings and then have to go back to this and revert back and forth. So that's my personal take, is I'd rather be a little more cautious on making sure we're ready to really go back and stick with it when, you know, whenever we do. So that's just my personal take, but.
Maybe it's more of a disan- from staff is to kind of where things are at, where city hall and maybe ourselves fall in line with the tiers of vaccinations and so forth. I mean, I do think at some point, do I think this works as well as us sitting, you know, on the dais in council chambers? No. Do I think that and hope that we get there? Because I do think we have an obligation to the public for them to see us and see us together and, and, and working in that environment. But again, I agree with you, Mayor, we also don't want to rush it and then have to have this ping pong effect where we're back and forth, back and forth. So I think it's obviously a delicate situation, but maybe it's just kind of at least starting a conversation so that maybe we can feel that there's a glimmer of hope on the horizon instead of just this open-endedness of we have no idea maybe when there's going to be the likelihood of us, of us at least meeting again at the CMC or so forth.
Yeah, I think that's, you know, right. We, we do need to, to get back together. But Steve has hit the nail on the head. You know, you basically, we've already got, where we disbanded and went to Zoom, and then we, we started doing meetings again, and then we had to break up again. So if, you know, I've, I've been, you know, as a police sergeant, I've already been vaccinated. So I don't personally have any fears of meetings, but I know I'm not speaking for everyone, and I don't presume to. So I think we should do it in an appropriate, you know, when it's appropriate, and we fall within the proper tier or whatever system we're on at the time.
All right, thank you. So can we table that one for now? All right. District five, Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Uh, nothing from me, thanks.
City Manager Scott Stiles?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, just a couple reiterations. I did want to join Councilman O'Neil in congratulating Division Chief TJ McGovern on his promotion. Very well deserved on his part. And he did serve very strongly for the city of Garden Grove during his tenure. And then also to, also join with Councilmember Tuha Nguyen. Yes, tomorrow, we are having a socially-distanced groundbreaking event. We are actually, later this week, the, what people know as the old Pavilion Store on, on Chapman will be completely torn down, and a brand-new Sprouts Store will be built there. So that building has been an eyesore for our community for many, many years. And so this is another great checkbox that I think is gonna be a great amenity to the city. We'll be videotaping some of that and getting it up on our website so, so folks can watch that. And then hopefully watch the demolition of the building in the, in the coming weeks. And I will say that the developers are on a fast-track schedule. They want to have the store completed and ready to be open before the end of the year. So we are excited about that. Secondly, I also wanted to mention briefly, there has been some new guidance come out from the state about youth sports activities. And that has some tiers in it too. For anybody listening that has your coaching teams or your coaching practices or whatever, go to the state or the county's guidance, and they will help you understand how to, you know, work with youth on the various sports activities that we have going on. And then just to kind of piggyback also on some of the previous comments, we are in the, we do remain in the purple tier for, I know councilmembers know this well, but for anybody listening, we are still in the most restrictive tier, purple. But as we've all seen, the numbers are coming down dramatically. And I think we are getting very close to hitting all of our metrics for going down to the next, the next red tier. And so we'll be monitoring that closely, and we will certainly let councilmembers in the community and put it on our website the very minute that we know that we're able to go down to the red tier. When we hit all the metrics, we have to stay there for fourteen days, and then we're able to officially follow the guidelines of that new tier. So that's really important to us. It was good news that the county today opened the convention center up for additional vaccinations. It was sad, given the terrible weather that was happening back in Texas and the Midwest and the East, which slowed down a lot of vaccine delivery to our part of the world. But we've seen some deliveries happening today, and I think that will be ramping up. So it's good to see some of these other sites opening up as quickly as possible. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Omar reminds me, we have to go back into closed session to continue the item that we started on before and ran out of time. So with that, we will go ahead and adjourn tonight's city council meeting. We'll take a very brief pause, let's call it five minutes, and then we'll reconvene in closed session. Does everyone just stay on the line?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Councilmembers, please just stay on the line, and we'll shift over to a private session hereafter. Thank you, and tonight's meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Yeah, hopefully it's still recording, but we are coming out of closed session at nine oh three PM, and there's no reportable action. And we can adjourn now for, till the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. With that, we will stand adjourned for this evening. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.